I'm excited just to be here. Thank y'all for coming out to our very first Bible study. And this is the first one to come. You know, next November, I'm putting Natasha on the spot. She'll be doing November, where we say November 16. Our next Bible study is November 16. So if you don't get the email, just keep it up here in mental note, alright? And Natasha Jaxton will be bringing the message. Now I figure if I said up here, you're accountable. And I want you guys to keep me accountable right now because we on a time restriction and I'm long-winded sometimes. So just do like this, alright? But if the Holy Spirit moving, we're just gonna continue to go. But I'd like for y'all to go in prayer with me first. Dear Heavenly Father, we just come just with a hallelujah in our spirit right now, Father God. We ask you just to humble us right now, Father, in your presence right now. Father God, submit us unto your presence right now, Father God. I ask you right now just to remove shanty out of the way and let your Holy Spirit speak through me. This is none of me. So I ask you to take me out of it right now. Father God, I ask you just to prepare the hearts for the word that is getting ready to come forward, that the people know that it is you that is speaking. Father God, we bind up the hand of the enemy right now. We bind up the hand of the stratcher right now. In the bondy name of Jesus. It is through the blood of Jesus Christ that we all are standing here on tonight. Father God, I praise you and I honor you. It is in Jesus Christ's name we pray. Amen. Amen. If you have your Bibles, turn with me to Matthew 24. And we're gonna start at verse 3. And I like to move around so you don't see me move across the stage. Just talk with my hands. And when you get there, Matthew 24, verse 3. We're gonna start at verse 3. And when you get there, say amen. If you need me to wait, say wait. Amen? Amen. And it reads as thus: Now as he sat on the mount of olive, the disciples came to him privately saying, Tell us, where would these things be? And what will be the sign of your coming and of the end of age? And Jesus answered and said to them, Take heed that no man deceives you; for many will come in my name, saying, I am the Christ, and will deceive you; and you will hear wars and rumors of wars; see that you are not troubled, for all these things must come to pass; but the end is not yet; for the nations will rise against nations, and the kingdom against kingdom; and there will be a famine, pestilence, and earthquake in various places. All these things are the beginnings of sorrow. Then they will deliver you up into tribulations and kill you; and you will be hated by all nations for my name's sake. But what I really want us to pay attention to is verse 10 through 13. And it reads, And then many will be offended, will betray one another, will hate one another; then many false prophets will rise up and deceive many; and because of lawlessness will abound, the love of many will grow cold. And verse 13, but he who endures to the end shall be saved. You may have a seat. I'm gonna read the Amplified Version too. Um, I wanted to read all of verse 3 through 13 for a reason, but I'm gonna read only 10 through 13 and the Amplified Version. And then many will be offended and repelled, and will begin to distrust and desert him who they ought to trust and obey; and will stumble and fall away and betray one another, and pursue one another with hatred; and many false prophets will rise up and deceive, and lead many into error; and the love of the great body of people will grow cold. Because of the multiplied lawlessness and iniquity, but he that endures to the end will be saved. Whoa, that was a mouthful. A lot of times, many of the preachers that we hear in church, uh, when we talking about the end of age, and we say, oh, we living in the end of age because this is happening and this is happening, and nations are rising up against nations, and Jesus is coming back, 'cause wars, he spoke of these, earthquakes. And we all, we all agree, we've heard that in the church. But that's not what I wanna focus on tonight. What I wanna focus on tonight is this verse 10 that is right there in the middle of all this. And I wanna paint the picture for you. I was gonna do a skip, but I said, no, that's okay. But I wanna paint the picture for you, okay? At this time, Jesus is with his disciples, and it says, hey, we wanna ask you privately, hey, Jesus, tell us, you know, we your disciples, we here. Tell us when you coming back? You know, let us know. Let us be the first ones to know when you're coming back. And he goes through all this, that, okay, we got that. But here's this verse right here that says, but then many will be offended. Can you imagine the faces of the disciples awaiting? Hold up. Who are these many? But I'll get to that. When preparing for this message today, I had a lot of thoughts that ran through my mind. Like, okay, God, what we gonna do this first Bible study? This gotta be exciting. We gotta, you know, we gotta come out with a bang, God. We just gotta, I gotta catch the extraordinary lady right there. And he says, you're not coming to tell them anything that they don't already know, but you're coming to remind them what the scriptures tell us to do. So my topic today is sowing seeds of love and forgiveness while I'm offended by you. Alright, I'll say it again. Sowing, I'm not sure if any of y'all heard me out there, 'cause that hit me in a tough spot too. Sowing seeds of love and forgiveness while I'm offended by you. Why is this question important? Well, I'll tell you. In the book of Matthew, Jesus is giving the signs of the end of age, and this disciple says, oh, Jesus, tell me, give me the sign of your coming back. And what a great question some might ask, and some of us don't quite wanna know 'cause we ain't ready. And Jesus said in that moment, many will be offended. Not few, not some, but many. So let's take a look at verse 10 again. And then many will be offended. I keep saying that and driving that, 'cause I want you to hear that. Many will be offended. Okay, who are these people? Can you imagine the disciples asking, they were looking around like, who's he talking about? Now, we're besides you. Who you, who you speaking of? Who are these many that you're talking about? We find the answer as we continue to read. And because of lawlessness will abound, the love will grow cold. And I know this is not a feel-good message. Promise me, I understand this is not a feel-good message. However, it is important for us to understand this. The great word for love in this verse is agape. Yes, there are several other words in the New Testament for the word of love. However, in this moment, Jesus is talking about the agape love of God. The love that he shed on you and I, all of us that say that we are in the body of Christ. This is what he's talking about. Those whom he loved. It is the same love that Jesus gives to us freely. This love is unconditional. So, I have a question. How many of us are showing this kind of love today? You can touch your hand. Don't have to. Just a question. Yeah. Just take a minute or no. I don't want y'all to get all tied up. I mean, you know, talk back with me. You know, I don't mind. But I, I really want us to really think about this thing. How many of us truly are showing agape love to those that offend us? Hmm, ouch, that hurts. That hurts. The answer to that question is Jesus was talking about in that passage. He was talking about us. He was talking about Christians. Okay, so you want me to love and forgive that person, knowing, good world, God, that she talking about me? You want me to go and talk to her and put my arms around her and love on her, knowing that she don't like me? Yes. Yes, that's what he's saying. Yes, that's what he wants. Yes. That is very hard to do, especially when you feel like you being disrespected. 'Cause I'm gonna tell you what. That's one thing you don't do to me. Don't disrespect me. 'Cause if I give you a level of respect, I expect the same thing in return. If I'm respecting you, respect me. So that's the way I am. Whatever your vices are, I don't know. But my vices is show me respect. If I'm giving you that respect, show me respect. So when somebody stand in my face and disrespecting me, whoa, you just offending who I am. Do you not know? Did I not give you that in return? Did I not show you respect? So why can't you give me that in return? But that's not what Christ is saying here. He is letting, he's saying, still sow those seeds of love and forgiveness, even in the midst of my offense. Okay. I don't hear nobody talking back to me. Turn to Galatians. I know, I knew it wasn't gonna be, I knew it wasn't gonna be an easy word. I understand. I understand. Chapter 6. Okay. Long as y'all are following along with me. I just wanna rightly divide the word of truth. It's that line upon line, precept upon precept. See, a lot of times, we get so used to the hoop and the hollering and the emotional part of church. But this is, this is not the kind of ministry that this is gonna be. No, there is gonna be substance in this. I pray that when you leave here, even when you leave out of these doors, and you're gonna be tested on this, trust me. I was tested on it this week, before I even got the message. Right when I was sending you that message, Ms. Scott, I was tested on it. Didn't even know what I was gonna talk about. Alright, Galatians, everybody there? He says, He who sows to the flesh will of the flesh reap corruption; but he who sows of the spirit, will of the spirit reap everlasting life; and let us not grow weary while well-doing, doing good; for undue season we shall reap, if we do not lose heart. Wow. If we do not lose heart. This is the substance of my title. If you reap out of your flesh when somebody is offending you, and girl, you shouldn't said this to me, and I don't know why she said that, you're reaping of the flesh. But when that offense come against you, and you say, okay, I don't minimize your feelings, I may have done that. Not exactly sure. And say, I'll pray about it. I'll pray about my approach next time. That is reaping of the, sowing of the spirit. You following me? Any questions right now? No questions? Alright. Why have our love grown cold? Why? Rhetorical question. Why? Why have our, you gotta answer it. Why? Why my love have grown cold to my sisters? Why can't I come to you, knowing what you did way back here, and come to you and talk to you? This is what Christ is saying. Because offense upon offense upon offense. Because a lot of times, we wanna get our feelings across. We good for that. I just wanna tell you how I feel. You need to know how I feel right now. But do you know how I'm feeling in that moment? See, you ready to get your feelings across, but how am I gonna take it? 'Cause now you got it off of your chest, now I'm offended. Don't it work like that? All the time? It works like that. And this is why he's saying many, the love of many have grown cold. Because the love that I did have for you, now I'm sitting back in my mind going, I don't know if I can love you with Christ's love. But we're so quick to say, I love the Lord. We singing the songs. We, Lord, I give you all of me. I am a minister of the Lord Jesus Christ. I have been baptized with your blood. I, I, I serve in the church. I do all these things. I'm, I, I mean, I'm a woman. I'm an extraordinary woman. Do you know who I am? But it's the little offenses that causes us to stumble, and those little things that causes our hearts to grow cold. Because we have so many offenses against our sisters and brothers in Christ, we do not know how to sow love and forgiveness towards each other. We're so used to operating out of our flesh that we don't even know how to operate out of our spirit. Because I'm gonna tell you what happens. We're so busy feeding our flesh. You know, I was, um, at my friend, matter of fact, I was at Camico's Church. Um, and my best friend, one of my best friends, she did a message. It was an awesome message. I get off track sometimes. But I wanna tell y'all this. She was talking about the flesh. And she said, do you know how much your body is worth, the flesh? Do you know how much you made out, how much? Number wise. Everybody was looking around like, what? How can you put a price tag on it? So I'm sitting there like, I don't know. You know what she said? Five dollars. Five dollars. But your spirit, man, is what Jesus on the cross died for. You cannot put a price on that. But the flesh with the minerals, the water, it's only worth five dollars. So why is it that we pour more into our flesh than we do our spirit, man? Another rhetorical question. You don't have to answer that. Just give me something to think about. I heard from one of my other friends, a great definition of forgiveness. She said, you know, when you truly have forgiven somebody, when you see that person and you don't remember the offense that they did against you? Guilty again. 'Cause I promise you, my mind go, rrrr. Rrrr. I may not say it, see, I might be smiling, but I'm like, why you smiling in my face? You remember what you did to me back in 2002? All of us have been there. Soon as you see that person, you could be all in the church, and you just, oh, I just been, been saved by grace. As soon as that one particular person cross your path again. You probably already got that one person in your mind right now. And going, as soon as I see them, ah! I just wanna, hmm, 'cause they don't realize who they crossed. We all have been there. Like I said, I can't talk about nothing that I have not yet have gone through myself. 'Cause I promise you, that person said, rrrr, right here in front of my forehead, in my mind. Can we sow seeds of love? Can we? How many of us can say that today? I can't, because I'm still working on myself. I am still a work in progress. I would not stand up here and tell y'all I have arrived, 'cause I have not arrived. I am a work in progress. We're all a work in progress. As women of the Lord, as daughters of the Most High, as extraordinary women with purpose, you are a work in progress. This is not a message of condemnation. This is actually a message of love. It's a message of love. I know y'all wait till I get two-thirds into it, I understand. In Matthew 5, 44 through 47, you don't have to turn there, you can, it's okay. For if you love those who love you, what rewards have you? Do not even the tax collectors do the same? And if you greet your brethren only, what do you, more than others? Excuse me. And if you greet your brethren only, what do you do more than others? Do not even the tax collectors do that? What is Christ, what are they saying in this message? What is God saying? If you only love those who love you, what makes you different than the world? How are we separated from the world? If we really sit back and think about it, if I only hang around people that I like, or if I only talk to people that I like, how am I different than a tax collector? That may not, how am I different than that sister out there that may not know the Lord? How am I different to her? 'Cause I tell you what, there are not believers that do more than some of the believers do. Yeah, that is good words. But how are we different? Sowing seeds of love and forgiveness while I'm offended by you. This is serious, ladies. This is serious. If we're gonna go out there, 'cause the majority of us are ministers, I can look around and I know many of us are ministers in here, and just being a daughter of the Most High God. There is a standard that God has raised for us. Are we at that standard? Or we just going day by day, holding on to our feelings, our emotions, what you said to me, what you done to me, how I feel about you, what I think about you, and what you think about me? Or are we finding ways to dig into our word and seeing what Christ says about loving each other? Are we doing it? The one thing that I love about Jesus is there's nothing that I go through that he has not already gone through. He has gone through offenses. He has experienced it firsthand. Why is it important for us to sow love of God? Why is that so important? We will reap the love of God. Jesus said, in my greatest hour, in my greatest need, my closest friends deserted me. Judas, he betrayed me. Peter, he denied me. And the rest of them flee, fled. The rest of them, and then Yah did follow, but way off to a far. Now, I wanna take you there. Can you imagine what Christ might have been feeling in that moment? Wait a minute. I done fed them. Now think about this. 'Cause most of us go, I done fed you, you done been in my house. I done mentored you. I done poured my time inside of you. I done clothed you. I done did this. Many of us as mothers say this. I done did this, this, and this. Wait a minute. And you gonna just do this to me right now? He could have taken on the attitude of offense in every way. But he was leading an example for us today. You will be offended. Point blank. You're probably gonna leave this after hearing this message today, and somebody gonna call, you gonna get home, husband, children gonna say something there. You be like, really? I just heard this. And you gonna be offended. But it's all about not, yeah, that is gonna come, but it's your response. What are you gonna do in response to that? Think how much hurt our God felt when he sat back and thought about all the love he showered on them. He loved. He loved his disciples. He loved them, even knowing this was gonna take place. He loved, he didn't hold back, 'cause he knew what they were gonna do. He, he entrusted them with his ministry. I went down to marinate on, he entrusted these twelve with his ministry, knowing that Judas were gonna do, knowing that Judas was gonna betray him, knowing that Peter was gonna deny him, and knowing the rest of them just were gonna scatter like roaches. They were gonna scatter. He knew this. But he died anyhow. How many of us are still stuck because of offense in our lives? We have not moved from point A to point B because we can't get past the offense. I can't get past what you did to me. I can't get past what they said to me. And I can't get to this place of my assignment because I'm still stuck in offense. I'm still stuck at what mama said five years ago. I'm still stuck at what my best friend did to me 10 years ago. And we can't move. Sowing seeds of love and forgiveness while I'm offended by you. Trust me, I understand. I understand offense all too well. All too well. I get it. I understand. You, you're probably sitting back and going, really? I didn't come out for this. I didn't come out to hear this. I didn't come out to be rebuked. It's not a rebuke. Basically, the Lord wants you to know, examine yourself and see where you are in the faith. See where you are in the faith. That's what it's about. It's not about the hoop and the hollering. It's not about me doing tricks up here. It's about us all examining ourselves as extraordinary women and seeing where I'm at in the faith. Lord, examine me. Purge out of me that is not good, even if it is offense, even if it is bitterness, even if it is strife. Proverbs 18 and 19 says, A brother offended is harder to win than a strong city; and contentions are like bars of a castle. It is hard. It is so hard to reach somebody when they are offended by you or anybody else. But if one thing that I know about people, people are people. And even though you didn't cause the offense, and you even sound remotely similar to the person that caused the offense, the heart starts to grow cold. Wait a minute, I can't let you in, 'cause you might wound me, just like the other person. We put safeguards, I'm almost done. We put safeguards around our hearts, and we say, no one else can get in. Fool me once, shame on you. Fool me twice, shame on me. That's what we say. But is it true? It's not. Sowing, showing, sowing love, sowing seeds of love, excuse me, and forgiveness while offended by you. Let us not be in this number. Don't be in the number that Jesus is speaking of. Many of us, and our, our love have grown cold towards each other. Don't be in the number. And even if we aren't in the number right now, find the way, go into prayer. Ask God to purify your heart right now. Lord, help me not to be offended by everything that people do to me. Help me not to wear my heart on my sleeve. Help me not to be emotional every time somebody says something to me or people have constructive criticism. Help me not to be like that. And just maybe, the reason why that person have offended you or said the wrong thing is because they're bleeding. Hurt people, hurt people. Have we ever thought about that? But we're so busy saying, well, we so busy. Who are you? We're so busy rolling our neck, snapping our finger, and saying, do you know who I am? Have you once thought, maybe somebody offended them? And maybe they're hurting just like you? We're all calling ourselves extraordinary. Why? Because we're not just ordinary. When Jesus was wrong, he did not repay wrong for wrong. We should follow the steps of Jesus Christ. And this is my last thing. John Pervier, awesome writer. I don't know if you ever heard of him? If you haven't, he wrote a book called The Beta Satan. And it is nothing but offense. The whole book is talking about offense. If you could pick that up, please pick it up. 'Cause I read that book last year, and I'm telling you, it was a blessing to me. He said, we should see how serious the sin of offense is. If it's not dealt with, offense would eventually lead to them. But when you resist temptation of being offended, it brings great, God brings great victory. Sow seeds of love, even while you offended by me. Amen? Amen. Let us pray. Is there any prayer requests, or anybody wants to come forth and need prayer? Anybody dealing with offense right now? I mean, I know we all have been offended sometime or another. Um, like I said, I wouldn't preach about anything, you come on up. I wouldn't preach about anything that I have not already dealt with myself and still dealing with. So at this time, you can come over for prayer, even if it's not offense, if there's something else that you may be dealing with right now. This is the time to come on. Like we said before, this is not about us. This is not about us. This is about getting to a place as women that are extraordinary to move forward in whatever ministry that God has you in. It's about us coming together, sharing our hurt, not talking about each other, not getting offended by each other, but coming together, showing love. Showing love.
Amen. That was such a great word.
Amen, that was such a, a great word for each and every one of us. And, uh, like we said earlier in the opening prayer, we just ask that God bless each and every one of us that we receive from the word of God. So, uh, while we're doing closing prayer, everybody will just stand up and we will be dismissed afterwards. Gracious Father in heaven, we thank you so much. How excellent is your name in all the earth. Father, we thank you for your great love, which is healthy, oh God. And in that healthy love, you break us. You break our emotions, you break our wills, you break our flesh so that we can experience the fullness and abundance of life that you desire for us to have. Father, we thank you for, uh, speaking to us this evening on the message of offense. We thank you, God, that right now our hearts have been circumcised by the word which has gone forth. And I pray that the word has been received on fertile ground, that each of us will re, yield and reap a harvest of, of great blessings and abundance. Now, Father, as we leave this place, but never your presence, we ask that you continually remind us throughout this weekend and into the next week of the word which has, uh, gone forth. We thank you for your spirit of love. And we ask, oh God, that through this message, we learn how to love freely, openly, and abundantly. And Father, we know that it's not gonna be easy and it's not just gonna happen overnight or it's not gonna change just because we heard this word one time. But Father, I pray that even after we've heard this message, we will continue to go home and to, uh, yield ourselves even more to your word and, and surrender our hearts in a secret place and in our private time with you, oh God. We thank you so much for gathering us here as women and, and sisterhood and tearing down the, uh, the wickedness and the wicked things of the enemy that he uses to easily beset us and to keep us in bondage towards each other. We pray that liberty and freedom is experienced through, uh, the extraordinary women's purpose ministry. And we thank you that as we are sown into here, that we will go and sow into other women's lives and into our family's lives and into the world as we leave, oh God. And we just bless you and ask that you continually keep us until we meet again. And Jesus is saying, let's pray. Amen.